Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 29th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. As you've probably seen, our executive session was canceled. So with it being seven o'clock, we'll head right into our agenda. We will be removing item four, which was a possible vote on those collective bargaining agreements, since we were not ready for that and did not have the executive session. All right, so with that, Steph, why don't you lead us?
Sure.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. So first up, we have an application for a common vic license for Lovely Pizza. So Tayeb, if you don't mind just coming up to the front, tell us your name, and then just you can take a seat right at the chair there.
Yes.
Right in the front.
Right there, right in the front.
Oh, yeah, no, anyone here for citizens input? Sorry.
Yeah.
No, I don't think so. Okay, so you're gonna just sit there, tell us a little bit about your application and what you're doing, and then we may have some questions for you, and then we'll take a vote for your license.
Sure, my name is Tayeb Georgie. I'm planning to open a pizza place here down Bird Street, 29th Bird Street, is the normal pizza place that serve like foods, normal pizza place, let's serve a lot of pizza calls on, normal menus. We plan to open like by tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, the project start like to set July 2020, takes us like two years to get it done. So I'm too excited to serve the public and community that food they like, you know what I mean?
All right, great. Well, we're always very excited to welcome a new business to town, especially uptown, to one of those vacant spots. So I know it's been a long road for you, so I'm glad that you're here at the end of that and ready to open.
Thank you so much.
Any questions from the board, or Bill?
Okay, so I just let the board, if anybody else has any questions first, so, okay.
Anyone on the board have any questions?
So just by way of just a background, so we didn't, obviously wanted to try and move you along tonight so you can get your approval, but were we still waiting on the insurance piece? I'm gonna turn to Katie on this. Was that something we still need, Katie?
Christina said he did drop off paperwork this afternoon, but I just wanna double check it in the morning to make sure it's exactly what we need, and if so, if the board approves, I can go ahead and issue the license tomorrow.
Okay.
Just wanna review it one more time.
So yeah, so my recommendation is that you approve pending the, you know, the approval of the insurance, and that's, but I wouldn't hold it up because of that, because I think it's something, you within a day of getting it resolved, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I already applied for it, so in 48 hours, I will be able to get the formal, you know, worker come insurance policy.
All right, so you're gonna need that before you open, though?
Yeah, it's effective, will be in effect tomorrow.
Okay, you will have it?
Yes.
So we'll need evidence of that before we issue the license to you, okay?
Sure.
Okay?
Yes.
And then I just mentioned, you know, as we were talking, there clearly seems to be some improvement that I think we can do on the town side with informing applicants, you know, opening a pizza place, this might be something you've done before, it might not be, but you know, as the building department is working with, you know, new business owners, I think that we just need to make sure to help educate them, because I think that this kinda hasn't been on your radar and someone else's lately, it's not just you, so, you know, maybe if we can create something to make it easy for businesses.
You should.
I think that's something we'll take back as well, on our side.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Sure.
And we would, you know, if you wanna have a ribbon cutting, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, but you know, if you wanted to do something, we're more than happy to, you know, do some sort of, you know, ceremony and ribbon cutting, and you know, send a picture into the paper, you know, whatever we can do. And there's also Foxborough Common Business Collaborative, which would love to have you, you know, get involved, and I'm sure you have your plate full right now, but just letting you know all the things that are available. All right.
And as a side note, is this the first time we're seeing the new forms?
Yeah, they were, she was giving us the Excel, and I think we thought that seeing the actual printout was easier than the Excel output, so we should be seeing them like this, in my opinion, I think it's a lot easier this view.
Yeah.
So.
I like it.
Yeah, me too. All right, so with that, I think we could take a motion, and it will just be subject to that, to that insurance piece, and you'll just have to hear from Christina before you know that you're good to go.
Okay, thanks so much.
And you know, for the TV, like if you have a TV, you need an entertainment license, just making sure.
Yes, everybody here is being helpful.
Okay, all right, great. Okay. Motion to approve a common victualers license for PJ-M Food Incorporated, doing business as Lovely Pizza, and that's contingent on approval of insurance application.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great, so we look forward to seeing you on the corner of Bird and Railroad.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, great, so as I mentioned, we're just gonna skip over item four and go right into item number five. Do we have Paige, do we have Pat, we can probably, I know we've got Katie up on the screen, maybe we could switch the view?
Also George Sammy is on as well.
Okay, great. I think he's here for the budget one, yeah.
Pat's on, too?
Pat's on, yeah.
And just Paige, too, yeah.
You want Paige to be on video?
Yes.
Good evening, Pat.
Ladies and gentlemen.
All right, good evening, everyone, and I think we, there's a PowerPoint that's in Board Docs, but I think it made sense for Christina to bring it up as well. So just to set the stage of this, I think we're here maybe, I don't know, the third or fourth time in our meetings talking about this, did everyone have a chance to watch Planning Board, or?
Yes.
So a lot of this will probably be repetitive from Planning Board, but I thought it was helpful for us to put together a PowerPoint to kinda guide the discussion, rather than not just looking at this giant bylaw and, you know, seeing if we have questions, so that's where we're at with the document that you saw put together. I will review it briefly, and Paige and Pat, feel free to chime in, of course, if you have anything to add in addition to what I say, I'm just trying to get it to open here, and it's not opening for me.
It's up on the board now, if you want.
Okay, all right, great. So the marijuana bylaw, we're here to talk about tonight, we will not be taking a position tonight, we'll do that next meeting with the rest of the Board of Selectmen warrant items, as well as the citizens' petitions, so we still have a little bit of time, you know, to have this presented, ask some questions, and if we need to make any changes to the bylaw, you know, that's really the intent of what we're looking to do this evening. So here we have a timeline, I'm not gonna go over everything here, but basically, you know, from the decriminalization of marijuana to, you know, our ban back in 2017, to where we are today, relooking at having recreational marijuana here in town. So with the next slide, all right, so why change Foxborough's rules now? I think, you know, we kinda talked about this, but just to recap, you know, back in 2017, it was something that was new, it was a little bit scary, I think we did not have an appetite to be one of the first communities to take this on, but since then, many communities have gone before us, even some of our neighbors, like Sharon, Plainville, and Mansfield. So, you know, I know I had thought, is it something that's worth putting out to the town? Obviously, none of us have any, you know, it can go either way, but it's something to take to the town to relook at because of some of the impacts that we could have to the community. So with that, we did a bunch of research, and just to go back, sorry, someone did approach us as well, so you probably heard that on Planning Board, a property owner up off of Route One, and they had thought about doing it as a citizens' petition, much like the signed bylaw that we're gonna hear later today, and then ultimately, it was decided that, you know, that didn't make sense, because they could bring it forward and then, you know, not get the license. So to keep it kind of more fair, we thought it made sense for the Board of Selectmen to sponsor the article, but it will go through the planning process, since it is a zoning article. So we did research with a number of different communities, the town of Brookline being one of the first adopters of retail marijuana establishments, kinda lessons learned, what do we need to, you know, what didn't you think of to put in your bylaw that we should think of? Town Council, Pat, who's on the phone, has gone through this in a number of different towns, so, you know, we came up with a starting point, and then massaged it as such to where it works for Foxborough, where we think it works. And then there was a number of different meetings between boards and departments, and various folks to create the warrants, and then make the feedback, and you've seen, you know, Planning Board and other departments, and other boards as well. So there will be a public hearing, again, since it is part of the zoning process. Paige, what's the date look like on that? I know you've told me, but I can't remember off the top of my head.
April 14.
Okay, thank you. All right, so if we can go to the next slide? All right, so I'm not gonna read through all of this, and I believe we have this up on the web, or if not, we'll have this revised version up very shortly, but you can see there's, there certainly are some tax benefits to communities that decide to allow recreational cannabis, and the last fact is actually interesting, as of December 2021, the state took in more from cannabis than alcohol, so there's that kind of pivot. If we can keep going? So Paige pulled together some populations of various communities around us, kind of near and far, different sizes, and you can see what it's meant to them. And then we've also talked to some of those communities to see, you know, okay, here's the numbers, but, you know, tell us, what does this look like for your community? What's the good then, what's the bad then? Keep going? All right, so.
Can I ask you a cool question?
Is that, is that the 6%?
Does that represent the 6% of which half is temporary?
Paige, is that correct? That's what I understand, that's the whole piece they've taken in, not just the 3% so far on the previous slide?
Um, I actually can't be sure.
I would think it's the whole piece, but the other 3%.
I feel like.
Actually, it is broken down.
It's either 3 or 6%.
I'm sorry, Paige, I didn't interrupt, go ahead.
Go ahead, Bill, do you have any better information?
Yeah, so there was a chart that we're able to extract from the state that actually provided two columns, one was revenue that came directly from the tax, and the other column was the impact fee, if you will, and that's also equivalent to 3%, or in some cases, it was actually paid out as a lump sum, in some cases, so I don't know that the numbers on that chart is actually reflective of all, of the 3 plus 3, if you will. I think that the number that you saw that was just displayed is strictly the taxing come from itself.
Thank you.
So that's impactful.
And if I may know, if you know, one town, like Rowley, had a $30,000 number, that was because that was called out in the second column, so I kinda took that to be as like some payoff or something, so none of the other communities had two columns worth, so I took that to be the tax on the left, and then the right to be like the bonus, sort of the extra payment or impact fee, something like that.
That's exactly right.
But we can provide the raw data, we have that available. It was very poorly labeled, so that's why we know so very little.
Yeah, I'd just be interested to know if that's what you'd expect every year, or half of that every year, those towns.
So you would get the amount of money that you see, and the reason why it's, the information that we had was as of a certain date in time, so the information that we had was from, I believe it was from as of December of this past year, so it actually changes, it's a moving target, obviously, so we don't, there's no, it's a rolling number that goes from month to month, because it's collected on a monthly basis.
Sure, that's an annual number, though?
That number that, that's not necessarily an annual number, that's a, that's a moment in time when that was collected.
Well, it's a moment in time, but it's over a period of time.
Yes, right, so I can't tell you the exact number of months that are in that number, but I can tell you that it's as of when that was extracted, which was about December of this past year.
It says, I'm sorry, I was just looking it up, I wanted to get it, it says revenue for fiscal year 2021, so that does represent one fiscal year, but we don't have an adequate breakdown as to like how much of that would be 3%, and how much would be, you know, the bonus 3%.
Yeah, there were two columns.
I have a feeling it's all the towns got, you know, and a lot of them are in their early years, so most of it right now is the new, is the highest amount, obviously, I would imagine, and maybe Pat would know better, because this is an area I'm not too, too familiar with.
So I looked, I looked at those two, that information, Paige, and it was, it was the higher number, you were correct, the left column was the actual rolling tax, and the other one is the impact fee, which in some cases can be an additional 3%, or it can be a flat number, which in some cases was a pretty high number, which they paid upfront, it was like a, you know, like a multi.
Many cities had very high numbers, but I didn't wanna put any cities on the example, because we're not like that, so that's why, but, yeah, the big numbers were definitely in the cities for the big impact fee, or whatever bonuses they got. I've been, you know, Atterboro, you know, very high, at almost a million dollars, so some of them are high.
And I think you have like a root document that you could send to Seth, right? I think I saw it at some point, that's why I knew there was.
Yeah, it's a spreadsheet.
A time frame on it, and I just couldn't remember exactly what it was to, you know, not misspeak.
Like, I'd like to know, and I think we should just know if we, whenever this goes, people look at this, we should just be very buttoned up about what that 325 represents for Sharon, if that's half or all, that they might, you know, it's an average, and it's a moving target, but what's in that?
The town population?
That's, you know, I actually Googled, I actually Googled that after.
I just did, too.
Same exact thing, and isn't that surprising about the populations?
That's the whole.
Oh, no, that's not the population of Sharon, it's over 17, it's 17,000, 2010.
So I.
They'd be missing a 10,000.
Yeah, yeah, we need to look at that, but I thought I Googled it.
Oh, did I miss a one?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, in 2010, it was 17,006, I think we might be a two in front of it.
So we've gotta clean this up and add maybe some, you know, the fiscal year that it is as well.
So fiscal '21, that would have, that would have been as of June 30th of last year, but it was probably reported as of December, so I got this information directly from Department of Revenue, from Sean Cronin, and he was able to, but it was, Paige was correct, it was poorly labeled, so it really did make it difficult for us to determine.
2020, the population was 18,571.
So we can figure it out, and then?
Yeah, fair enough.
Just so people know that.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll see this presentation a number of times, so anything, any feedback we have to make it more clear to everyone, I think is exactly what we're here for tonight.
Yep.
So our role, going to the next slide, obviously, we know marijuana is now legalized in the state of Massachusetts, but our role as a town is we can adopt our own licensing process and bylaws to allow it, execute the host community agreement, which you guys have seen, but it is a very heavily regulated industry with state laws, so the Cannabis Control Commission does have quite a heavy hand in, you know, a lot of it. So concerns and considerations, what did we think about when we were doing the first draft, and, you know, the various drafts? We knew we didn't want marijuana in or around our business uptown, and we didn't want it, you know, sensitivity to residential areas, and then we also were thinking about pre-existing, you know, schools, I know there was a question that came up on Planning Board about like the ice rink over on West Belcher, and I think that's where, you know, Paige, correct me if I'm wrong, but like, we will have the discretion, although we have the overlay map, you know, to look at each of these and see what's right for our community, because it is by special permit. So it's not by right, it is special permit that the Planning Board is able to really look at these and see, you know, what's right for the various areas within the overlay. So things that have changed since the last meeting, like we said, I think Paige was really honest, that this is, this is new to a lot of us, we have Town Council, obviously, helping us, but it's a lot of information to digest, and some things have changed. So since Foxborough has 10 package stores, we are looking at two marijuana retailers, not one. If we wanted to go less than two, we would have to do a ballot, so we are looking at two, that is something that has changed. And then we had talked about not allowing delivery drivers and couriers, but we realized that if they're licensed by the Cannabis Control Commission, which is what that CCC stands for, we can't prohibit them from basically driving through and delivering in the town. I mean, essentially, that's probably already happening today, without us even knowing.
Question before we go on? What about the discussion of cultivation? You know, that was also a side thing about licensing cultivation, are we not gonna be discussing that at all? They didn't really discuss that at the Planning Board meeting either, so that was one of my takeaways.
Yeah, Paige or Pat, I'll let you guys chime in there, I don't believe that we can, that we'll have a limit on those, but things have been changing and evolving, I don't want him to speak.
I'd be happy to address that, Madam Chair, in order for the town to prohibit the operation of one or more distinct types of marijuana licensed operations, we would have to go to the ballot. We would need a ballot question in order to adopt a bylaw that restricts any particular type of licensee from operating within.
So we're looking, we're looking at both.
So, so Pat, would, could potentially, is a cultivation plant considered a retailer?
No, a cultivator is, cultivation license is a separate license issued by the Cannabis Control Commission, it's a separate class of license. It is considered for the purposes of our bylaw to be a marijuana establishment, thus it is subject to the special permitting provisions and all of the other conditions of the bylaw. However, it is a type of marijuana establishment that, again, is licensed separately by the Commonwealth, and in order for the town to prohibit the operation of a particular type, it would have to go to the ballot and obtain ballot approval to adopt a bylaw.
So they would apply for a license from us as what?
As a, well, they don't apply for licenses from us, that's a point that I think we should really make clear, the only license that's issued for marijuana establishments is issued by the Cannabis Control Commission at the state level. As the Chair had noted earlier, the Cannabis Control Commission bears the primary responsibility for vetting and determining whether or not these particular establishment operators are well-suited for their proposed enterprises. What we can do at the local level is adopt a bylaw that reasonably regulates time, place, and manner by which such establishments operate. So the Board of Selectmen will not be issuing any licenses for these establishments. The principal role that the Board of Selectmen will fulfill is to approve and execute a host community agreement, which is a prerequisite to an establishment operator filing an application for license at the Cannabis Control Commission. So the Selectmen will have a chance to vet the various proposed operators that come, that wanna come into the town to do business, and you will have to approve and execute a host community agreement, which would establish terms of operation before they can move on in the process. They would then have to go before the Planning Board, obtain a special permit pursuant to this bylaw, assuming that, obviously, that it's adopted, and they would need to comply with all other building requirements within the town, you know, they'll have to get appropriate permits from the building inspector, have whatever permits or approvals are needed for waste disposal systems and the like, they'll be subject to those requirements, but there is not a separate license that is issued by the town above and beyond the special permit.
So Pat, how many cultivators could we have in town? Is there, how many could we be looking at if we pass this?
You could be looking at as many as you feel the town is capable of hosting reasonably. If you choose not to execute a host community agreement with an applicant, then they're dead in the water, they don't move forward. Now, I say that with the caveat that the Cannabis Control Commission has indicated clearly in all of its guidelines and the regulations sous state, that it's up to the local municipality to determine whether or not to execute a host community agreement with an applicant. However, you do have to be reasonable, fair, and equitable in the way you review host community agreements. What I would recommend, and what is done in many communities, is in the event that this bylaw should pass and the prohibition that is now in effect in Foxborough is rescinded, what I'd suggest we do is work toward preparing some rules or regulations that the Board of Selectmen would adopt, setting forth certain criteria in a process for the application for host community agreement and the standards that would be applicable when the Board is reviewing host community agreements. Having that criteria in writing, in the form of a rule, regulation, or guideline, will be very critical and very important to the Board in terms of establishing a standard set of criteria that would allow the Board to rebut arguments that it's acting arbitrarily or preciously in allowing, you know, a host community agreement in one case, yet choosing to deny it in another, so that's a suggestion I would make as we move forward with the process.
One last question, Pat, again.
Sure.
Lee, if it's okay?
Of course.
So if someone wants to cultivate and get a 100,000 square foot warehouse, any potential income would just be the regular taxes on a warehouse, there would be nothing above and beyond when they, when they sell it to the retailer, it'd just be regular business taxes for a warehouse?
That's correct, Doc, they would be taxed based upon the percentage of gross sales that they make from their cultivated product, and there would be likewise a community impact fee that would be applicable, and the community impact fee has to be based on actual expenses that the town incurs, or anticipates that it will incur in, you know, taking measures to secure the community's interests in light of the new business enterprise. So we can talk about that in more detail if you'd like, but there, the host community, I'm sorry, the community impact fee has, without question, been the most controversial topic within this statutory scheme since its adoption, and there are currently pending on Beacon Hill, in fact, two bills that are moving through the General Court Review process that, you know, could substantially affect the community's practices when imposing community impact fees in these situations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yep, go ahead.
Just real quick, so it looks like the language around superseding federal law has been removed from the.
Yes.
Okay, right, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, I didn't know where that came from in the first place, and as I looked at it in more detail after our last discussion, it really didn't make any sense or have any great impact, in my view, in terms of the substance of the agreement, and I thought it was subject to varying interpretations as well. So the bottom line is, as is typically the case, if there is a federal or state law that pervasively addresses a certain area or subject matter, we cannot adopt a local bylaw that supersedes or is inconsistent with that applicable state or federal law, so that, in my view, would not need to be stated expressly in the bylaw.
Okay, and then just real quick, and maybe this is more of my own curiosity, but just maybe also people will wanna know what they're getting, is, so if there's a marijuana retailer, people, you know, of age, I guess, can walk in and buy their dime bag or whatever they do, and then is there also, is that what you call it?
That's the street slang.
There you go.
I don't even order a dime bag.
Nickel, I don't know.
I haven't heard that in a while, but that's okay.
Will there also be pot brownies, and cookies, and lollipops, and pot gummy bears, and all of that stuff?
Yes, there's edible.
But they're not allowed to consume them, so that's, I guess, what's coming next?
Yes.
Is, like, that's the next thing, but we're not even looking at that, is you will be able to consume these things on property, almost like a bar, that some other community may look at, however, we are not looking at that for the purposes of this, of this year.
Okay, got it, thank you, Moser.
Okay.
So I have one question, so I just wanna make sure I have it right, so there's no equation for cultivation based on population or liquor licenses or anything, so we could have, so if the commission decides they could, you know, give out 50 licenses, or, I mean, I'm using a large number, which I'm sure that's not gonna happen, but my point is they can give whatever they want.
Well, no, if you go to the approval process, they have to make it through us and the host community agreement before they, so this is a, it's kind of long, it's two slides, but I'm gonna really give you guys the Cliff Notes. You come to the town for the host community agreement, then you go to the Cannabis Control Commission, and that's when you start with the Planning Board, so you basically don't even get to those next pieces if you haven't executed with us, and we could, we don't have to entertain, certainly, Pat, jump in at any time if I'm misspeaking, you know, obviously 50 cultivation, it's whatever feels right for us. The retail, we have to allow at least two.
The retail, there is that.
But we may not get two, you know, we may get two applicants, we may not, you know, but we would have to look at at least two if we looked at this without a ballot question.
So we have a little more say in the number for cultivation than we do, I mean, the other one is gonna be based on the liquor licenses, flat out.
Well, you minimally have two, so, and then if you want.
But I go for cultivation.
Yeah, for cultivation, yeah.
For all of them, we could have, we could have 50 if we wanted to.
Yeah.
But I don't think that our community has an appetite for that.
Right. If I may, Madam Chair, in my experience, cultivation facilities generally require a lot of space, either outdoors or indoor areas, they are very secure, many of the towns in central and western Massachusetts that have a lot of open land are, quite frankly, very eager to lure cultivating operations to their community because of the. the, the open, the remoteness that they have. It's suitable. In, in a, in a community like Foxborough, which does have a very substantial, you know, residential community, business community established already, there may or may not be a, a, a location within the town that you, the Board of Selectmen, deem is appropriate for, for cultivation. If there is, you would have, you would vet with the applicant. The, the specific location that he, she, or it intends to utilize for the facility, you would vet with them their proposed plans for mitigation of any odors, sound, noise, what have you, whatever quote-unquote nuisance-type factors could be created by a cultivating facility. And only if and when the Board reaches a level of satisfaction that it, it would not be harmful or would be in the best interest of the community to proceed with that proposal, would you execute a, a host community agreement. If you don't execute a host community agreement, the, the operator really has nowhere to go.
Okay, perfect. So, going to the, the next slides, and again, it does go over two slides, and I'm really condensing it, but it's host community agreement, Cannabis Control Commission's provisional license, during that time, they may apply to the Board of Selectmen, and then it all happens. So, you know, if this were to pass, we're probably looking at a year, from our understanding, you know, from, from start to finish, based on all the steps that are required. And there is a number of, you know, public process before the host community agreement, you know, can be executed as well. So, I think we can let you guys read that, and then we'll probably go down to Foxborough's proposal slides. So, I think this kind of sums up what we talked about. Retail, too, marijuana establishments, which is the definition, definition for cultivation, as we said earlier. Social consumption is not allowed, so, you know, while you may buy something that has marijuana in it, you're not allowed to consume it there. There's, like, like a bar, you're not allowed to do that. Delivery is permitted because we cannot prohibit that. And then, we have the proposed overlay map. And, you know, Paige, I don't know if you're, you're, obviously, your Board hasn't approved this yet, or I, I know that there was some concerns particularly around, I'm going to call it Foxfield Plaza, but that's not the name, Forbes Crossing, sorry, I couldn't think of it, what feels right. But you'll see it generally runs along our two more commercial sections of town away from residential and our uptown businesses, as we spoke about. And even the, there is guidelines at the state level around that 500 feet that we talked about. I know it came up on Planning Board about the fence, and when I, when I read it, it looked like there is a definition for how that works. And again, the skating rink came up, and we have the ability to look at that when evaluating the host community agreement, to say, does this feel right or not? And, and kind of stop it there if we thought so. And again, it is a special permit, it's not by right, so it does give us more control once it gets to the Planning Board as well. So, next steps from here, I guess before town meeting vote, there will be another Planning Board meeting, because this is a zoning article, it does need a public hearing, as we spoke about. I'm sure we'll have more education sessions. Bill, you're going to, not only this warrant article, but you're doing something in this room. Again, I just may need you to refresh me on the date about the warrant as a whole. So, remember where he used to go to the, the Council on Aging and do one on TV? Now that COVID's kind of over, condensing that and doing that here with the seniors or anyone else that wants to attend and televise it.
Right.
When, when is it?
It will be, it's usually like the last weekend.
April 27, at 2:00 P.M.
Yeah, last weekend in, in, in April, yeah.
Good.
So, from here, town meeting will, will vote. Again, it is zoning, so it will need two-thirds. If it is passed, we'll need to adopt regulations, we'll have to, you know, look at the house, the host community agreement. Chief Grace did also want to adopt a new bylaw to prohibit the public smoking of marijuana, which we don't have, which we would be doing in the fall town meeting. We have, we didn't want to put it on here, because if it doesn't go through, we don't need to look at that, and we certainly have time. And then, you know, to remain competitive, we could issue a request for proposal or an RFP, seeking best financial packages, you know, to look at those two licenses all at once, rather than, you know, have them come in here, spot here, to really pick, pick what's best for the community.
Madam Chair, may I just interject for one second?
Yep.
This is Pat. I, I do believe you have a general bylaw, Section 162-1, that prohibits public consumption of, of marijuana products on public property and public places. We may want to beef it up or amend it, but I think there is something on the books right now.
Yeah, Chief Grace had some concerns, so he's already mentioned that in our preliminary discussion, so I believe he does have some thoughts on that.
Okay.
So, with that, it's a lot of information, but I thought that the PowerPoint just kind of helped guide it a little bit. I, I think that the bylaw is in a good position from Paige's standpoint, from Bill's standpoint, from Pat's standpoint. Do we have anything else? I know Planning Board weighed in, there were some changes that came out of that. I did come here and sit down on AdCom, and there were some questions that came up on that, that we, that we massaged things. Something that has come up, you know, do we want to create, like, a subcommittee to look at the host, the, the host community agreements with us then formally approving them? That, that was a suggestion of someone not on this board. I don't feel passionately about it either way, but I am open, you know, to it. If, if we wanted to have a group take a look at it ahead of time, maybe it's someone from Selectmen, Planning, AdCom, or residents to make a recommendation to us. That's something that, that has come up that I don't think that we've necessarily discussed at the table yet.
I think, I think we have plenty of time to think about that.
Okay, yeah.
But, yeah, I could go either way.
Yeah, so just, just so that you know, that is something that did come up, that someone had mentioned, so. Anything, anything else on this one? Nope. And like I said, not our last meeting. We do still have the next meeting, where we'll take our positions and get the warrant closed, and, and if anything comes up between now and then, certainly, reach out to Bill, Paige, or me, and we can, you know, talk about it or, or get it in here, especially if it's around clarifying something.
Yeah, I'd just like to mention what an incredible job everyone's done on this, you know, from beginning to where we are now, having a pretty good grasp of, of bylaw change, you know, from zoning to planning to build your office, certainly, Paige coming on board, running.
Yeah, I, I think Paige really hit the ground running on this one.
I think Paige expected to come back to this.
Nice, easy, relaxed.
She picked it up really quick, so I'm really grateful for that, too, because it was, there's a lot, there was a lot to digest in this one.
Yeah, it's come a long way from point A to point B. And, you know, like Paige said, we, we had a lot to learn and a lot to digest, and a lot of people to talk to, and a lot of, you know, cross-collaboration to, to get through. But I think that, you know, we've, we've done that, and, and, you know, there's still more time if there's anything else that we need to take a look at.
I think the Planning Board has really become a lot more comfortable with the approach as well, and, and I'm really grateful for Pat's help on this, too, because he's been really, really helpful, so.
All right, great. So, I think we're going to move into the signed bylaw, and then I do just want to talk about the warrant in, in general, make sure that we're all good on the other items after. So, with that, I will not lead the discussion on this one.
All right, so it's probably best, I know that Barney and Lorraine are both here tonight, as is Bob, Attorney Bob Burr, is here to, to help explain the, the most recent changes that were presented, that are being presented to you as well as to AdCom. AdCom, actually, I think SARD actually before you did, in this case. So, the major change is that prior to tonight, it was, the, the, it was, this effectively allows billboards, electronic billboards to be built along 95. And the major concern that had been expressed is the number of billboards that could be allowed potentially. And so, ways to address that are to actually, to, to enlarge the number of concentrics, the concentric rings at which a bill, a billboard can be built, so it doesn't get too close to another one. And by doing the current proposal, that actually takes into consideration and creates a 1,500-foot barrier between one billboard to the next on 95. It also takes into consideration that it, no billboard can be built between, with less than 1,000 feet from an interchange on the highway. So, there was some consideration given to the fact that, when you look at the zoning map, there is, there is a, it could, the potential could have existed for a billboard, billboard to be built near the one, the 95, 495 interchange. By, by increasing it to 1,000 feet, it actually takes away that possibility. So, I'll give that as the backdrop. I know that Barney and Lorraine and Bob have all been working on this, but based upon the input that I've gotten from the Board on this, their concerns was that fewer was better than more, in this case, and so I think that's been achieved by this most recent version.
I don't think there's anything for us to say.
Yeah, I think we, like, marijuana, when we've talked about this, we've talked about this quite a bit, but, you know, since there have been some changes, which I think everyone had requested, we're back here just to see if there's any questions, but I don't think we need to go through the whole thing again. So, this will get us to a total of...
Three.
Three, which I feel like is where we originally talked and we're comfortable. Obviously, you know, individually, we may vote how we, we may at town meeting or, you know, to recommend, but I think we're much more comfortable right here, and if you can...
Hold this up.
Hold this, this up.
So, when we were here two weeks ago with the then version, there were five potential locations in which a billboard could be constructed. And, you know, as Bill indicated, we've made some changes. One thing we've done is to put language in here that would prohibit a billboard being within 1,000 feet, adjacent to or within 1,000 feet of an interchange. And we've also eliminated any billboard location on 495. So, we're just dealing with 95 right now.
So, this is, this is the result with the SARD interject, with the larger circles that show 1,500 feet. 495 is no longer part of the bylaw suggested language, and as Mr. Keegan stated, an extension of the state regulation or federal regulation that would limit billboards within 500 feet of a entryway or exitway onto or off an interchange of I-95 has now, through the proposed bylaw, been extended to 1,000 feet. And the result of that is the red, which is difficult to see, but by town meeting, I'm sure it'll be presented a little bit better than this, but there's literally three sections using the typical billboards with which we've looked at before, meaning the DPW facility, the Rounds properties up here. I happen to represent American Outdoor Advertising in conjunction with Mr. Rounds. Attorney Spillane couldn't be here this evening, but he asked me to hold the signs, say as little as possible. And then, there's a third section here as well, too, where a third potential billboard could be. So, when this conversation originally started with Mr. Overett, I believe Selectmen Elfman had mentioned, can you just simply limit the number of signs? And I think Barney did a good job of coming up with language that achieves the goal of the Board of Selectmen in a way that does not just put a number, but actually makes it work from a zoning perspective. So, the result of this is there were locations here where billboards could exist, and then down on this triangular spot here. I still have made the argument that I believe most of this area was already precluded due to the on-ramp or off-ramp, even at 500 feet, with 1,000 feet, that's, um, eliminated, eliminated, so.
One, interesting aspect about, about 495, there are very, very few billboards on 495. I know Lorraine goes up the list frequently for work, and she can tell you, there's probably nothing between here and, and Route 9. I know there are a couple up in Methuen, I can't think of very many down in, going towards the, towards the Cape.
I actually noticed, just last week, I had to hop on 495, and it looks like there's one in Norton now, kind of by that, it's not the Holiday Inn anymore, the old Taunton Holiday Inn. You know where that's, Norton, Taunton? I hadn't remembered seeing one there before, but that one actually happened to jump out at me because of our conversations. Yeah, so...
So, I think by, by eliminating that, we're not only achieving, you know, your objectives, but we're being consistent, I guess, with what 495 is.
Yep.
And I suppose that Lady Burr Johnson will be looking kindly down upon us for furthering her highway beautification objectives.
Interested to, just, I'm sorry, understand better what streets they'll be, so I, I can see where they are on 95, but somebody on Chestnut Street drove by me the other day and was like, I want to talk about this sign thing, and sped off, and then I was like, hmm, Chestnut.
So, that would...
Be the Rounds property, I would think, right?
Yeah, that would probably be closest to the Rounds.
And which street is the Rounds property?
The Rounds will be where East Belcher and Springbrook come together. And of course, the DPW would be off of, off of Elm, so you would have, hopefully, enough distance to Chestnut Street, not Chestnut, to Central Street and any homes on Elm Street.
And, and where 95 butts, you know, where it crosses over Coacset, there is residence, residential houses right there, so I don't think anything could go up on that, on that piece based on...
That's what he was probably thinking about.
Yeah.
So, I have a question. Throwing a little bit of, of a curveball at you guys. So, I support the concept, I support, you know, revenue it would bring for the town. So, the end of last week, I drove by, I was going up Elm Street, and as I got close to the DPW, just so I could get a visual of it, and for the first time, I didn't realize how close 95 actually is. I guess maybe when I'm driving there, I'm looking ahead, but because I was specifically looking, I was kind of, nobody behind me, I'm slowing down, I'm like, oh my God, 95 is right there. So, I know this is going to sound crazy, because that's the, where we're going to, where the location we would make the most money, because it would be on our property. Do we know where, a general idea where we might put that one? How far that is going to be? I, I just thought it seemed the first house on Elm, and then the last house after you would go by the DPW, the, the first house that, residential house that you would hit. So, and somebody threw at me, you know, we're using a figure of 300 feet, what if somebody lives 303 feet from here? Like, is there really that much of a difference? So, I'm, I'm a little concerned for our own residents, like, if we, we okay this, and then a resident is going to, I know Bill had talked about the lighting, but for me, I'm not, I'm not, not even the lighting, is it fair to somebody to be able to, to see a structure, a billboard there that hasn't been there? So, do we know the one that we're proposing, if everything passes through on DPW, how far that one is going to be away from the two, the two homes that would abut the DPW building, property?
So, I, I was told by Ryan Norton, who did the, you know, the work on this, that there would be no home within 300 feet of that location. And I have to believe that the program that he worked with to develop this is sophisticated enough to, to give him that kind of comfort and give us that kind of comfort. Ultimately, of course, if the bylaw is approved, an applicant will have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get a special sign permit. And that would be one of the considerations that we would take into account, issues relative to neighbors, issues of light, and things of that nature.
Well, because, not that I'm, I'm not trying to throw something, I, I wish I had thought this through, because, not that I want to throw something at you, after you guys have gone back and redrafted and done all this work, but now I'm wondering, is 300 feet really enough from a residence? I mean, I know we, we talked about distance, you know, from, going from 500. I might have, I might have been okay with the 500 if it was, like how you said, Barney, that you couldn't, we wouldn't have been able to do one down by the 495 belt anyhow. But I'm just, I just want to make sure that then we don't, we're not hearing from residents that we've supported something that, like I said, then they're going to see, so 300 feet, so, so does that mean, what if it's 302 feet? You know, like, I think the first time you guys brought it before us, I used the equation, if you were up at San Bernsfield, you know, 300 feet is a football field, so it's end zone to end zone. So, if my house was in that end zone and there's a billboard there, you know, I mean, I guess this is your business, you, you know the particulars better than most, than I do, but, like I said, I had someone throw that at me, and they said, so, so what if it's 302 feet? Stephanie, do you really think 302, you, you've used a number, is that number really adequate for some, for, away from somebody's home? So, I guess that's what I'm throwing at you. And I'm sorry it's at this late time in the process.
I mean, the sign itself has to face the, the highway to be of any, any value, so I don't think it's going to, to be of any projection onto somebody's property. And my understanding of the technology is that the lighting is basically there. It's not as if we're hitting with floodlights that are going to cause any, any lighting wash to, to cause any, any annoyance to a homeowner.
But what about the structure itself?
A structure, the structure. There's no way to get around that, unfortunately.
Yeah. And they're all, they're, none of them are in, none of the billboards will be in actual residential, residentially zoned land. So, you know, they are all in land that is zoned for, you know, whether it's building, you know, or it's, it's, they're not being thrown up in R-40 and R-15, you know, zones, which is our residential zones.
But with that being said... But with that being said, we're changing the bylaw to allow billboards. So I just want, I just want to make sure we're being fair. Like I said, the whole concept, you know, I'm, I'm with you guys the whole way. But then when someone kind of came up and said, well, you know, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking, like I said, that home, the first house on Elm, is not that far from the DPW. So I, I just want to make sure we're, you know, it's fair to residents. I believe you about the lighting. You know, like I said, that's not my expertise. I absolutely believe you, but do, you know, would I want to still be in my upstairs and look out the window and, and looking at the billboard? So, and I'm not really, that's why I don't know if we know what the real distance is from the existing homes that are there.
Yeah, again
And maybe you don't know that right now.
I haven't gone out to measure it, but, but based on what, you know, Mr. Norton told me, I believe it's, that's the distance at least.
But like you said, if someone is 302 or 304 feet, I mean, they're, they're, they're further than, than what's allowable. So, you know, like anything, you could push it, well, what about, you know, five feet? I mean, I think that the, the number of feet are there for a reason.
That's where, what the article is doing, is changing it so we are making it allowable.
Well, you know, you said, what if someone was in 302 feet? And I'm just, I'm saying that they, then they would meet the qualifications, like that part. I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
But, you know, if you're saying, how would that work with it, you know, they, they
Oh, oh, no, I know, I know, that's what I mean. But if it's past a 300, yeah, then, then if you're 302.
Right.
But now I'm starting to think, is 300 feet enough away from somebody's home? Is basically, I guess, what I'm getting at.
I understand what you're saying. Just to add to what Mr. Overett said, the billboard does face the highway. Generally, the lighting now with the new technology does not have a negative impact on residents. Most towns don't have a bylaw line that says that it has to be so many feet away from residential unit. It says it has to be in a commercial or industrial area. That tells me that that has not been a problem to date. So if anything, the town of Foxborough has been more concerned with residents by adding this particular line in here. When we do see this line, you know, we've seen 300 feet. When you apply to the state, the state requires that everybody within 500 feet of the billboard is notified so that they can attend public hearings. And in my experience, which is just my experience, there's not been a objection by residents to these billboards. One of the reasons why is because they're high in the air. So it's not like they're shining in your bedroom. They have a very specific target of the highway. And as curt as it may sound, people get used to them. They may not like them. For the first two weeks you drive by and you think that the whole town has gone downhill. But people strangely get used to them. They are high up in the air. And, you know, we have not run into that. We haven't had to have the bylaw written this way in other towns. So if anything, I think it's more restrictive.
How many feet up are they usually? So it wouldn't be like outside of your kitchen window, obviously, because that would be too low.
90 feet generally.
So that's higher
In the air.
Than a house, generally.
Yeah.
That would say, you know, residential structure.
Last week, when I came down, I did drive down Route 1. Those are shorter poles. I don't know exactly what their connection is to residents because that really is commercial.
Yeah, no residents in those areas.
Yeah.
So these are
Perfectly silent, too, right? They don't make any buzz or anything, right?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Not, nothing, I can't say absolutely no buzz, but I'm trying to think the last one I was near. I don't believe so. If you heard a buzz, it would be like hearing these lights, like you were right on top of it, like any other type of an electrical. So I can't say no buzz. But nothing that you're going to hear that would be considered a nuisance from, and a butter.
Yeah, it just, I thought of it because there's people who live near the library on one side of it, that they hear this noise virtually all the time.
Yeah.
And I've walked by and you, you do hear it, like, you notice it.
I'm a neighbor.
So that just made me think of the sound issue.
And Barney also stated that this, this, this allows them to be considered on I-95, which I've said in the past, is still subject to a special permit, public hearings, et cetera, for any one of these locations. There may be a chance where this bylaw gets passed and no billboards go in, you know, that's still going to be subject to a special permit process.
And obviously, it could be closer to, like, our DPW building or our buses. So, you know, it is just residential than, you know, I think, I would assume that our DPW building is going to be within 300 feet, just so that everyone kind of knows what we're looking at. That wouldn't be set back.
Exactly right.
Yeah, the one thing I can assure you again is that the Zoning Board of Appeals will listen to neighbors and will take into account their, their concerns and their considerations. We, we always do. You know, I like to think that we always do and we always give credence to the comments and concerns and the questions of, of residents. And again, it's subject to a special sign permit from the zoning board and will certainly consider all factors, all issues, all considerations in making determination.
And I think that's the thing with both of these that we've spoken about tonight, is it opens the door. There's a lot more that goes into it, public hearings, special permits, you know. It, it doesn't mean that the floodgates will, will certainly open on either.
Oh, yeah. And, and by no means would I, would I not think that your board would do its due diligence. But what happens is the bylaw has changed and says 300 feet. And someone comes into you and they say, well, I don't want to look at it. And then I would think you guys would say, but you're 310 feet away and, you know. So I'm just trying to do, do diligence for people who probably live the two homes that are closest to DPW. And I even hated to bring it up because that's the one spot that's the most beneficial for the town. But, you know, what's beneficial to town is great, but we just want to make sure that our residents are not impacted, you know, for the, you know.
I think Doc had something to add.
Yeah, just one other side thing. I mean, there's a potential of a, hopefully down the road, a new Public Works building. You know, what's that going to be?
Right.
30, 40 feet?
Well, it'd be, it'd be renovated. The existing building would be renovated. So there's not going to be a new building, you know, it's going to be renovated. And, but there is going to be probably an addition to it.
Right, off the back, because don't they want to do washing or
Yeah, washing of vehicles, things of that nature.
Stuff like that. But I mean, that's going to be a tall structure, too.
Yeah, but it's not a billboard.
It is not.
You know, I mean, I just, I, I'm just taking into consideration, like, if I were going to, you know, be in my yard and, you know, I don't know. I'm not really that picky. Things like that don't bother me that much. But we're, you know, when we sit up here, we're supposed to be doing what's best for people who live in town, not just our, what we think ourselves. I'm not as, I don't think it would bother me. I'm just wondering, you know, for the people who are but, how they would feel, that's all.
So there's just one, there's another way to look at that, is, okay, so what is the right number?
Yeah.
You know, and, and I think, you know, if you're 350 feet or 400 feet, 500 feet, you're still going to see it.
Yeah.
You know, so I guess, I guess the point is that, that what Bob said is that that consideration was given as part of the initial forming of the bylaw. Let's put a reasonable buffer against that.
Yeah.
So that, you know, that, and so it is, it is something, it's not something you see in other communities. If you're up, if you're in that zone, you're subject to those dead impacts regardless.
And you're probably then within 300 feet of a zone, you know, kind of like, like the chicken and the egg that we talk about with Barney.
And as I was driving by, I was actually thinking to myself, well, okay, well, but, you know, you're listening to cars drive by, drive by on 95 and you're, I don't know. I just, I thought to myself, did you never look to the left as you were driving down? There's stuff like, I was like, oh, my God, it's right behind DPW. Maybe just to this time of year, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's bare, the trees are bare.
Yeah, less leaves.
Yeah.
It really hasn't been an issue in the other communities that I've worked in when they actually go up. And the reason why is because the real commercial focus here is to get to the highway. So the last thing that those that are in the business, marketing these, marketing the advertising want is homes around it or anything. They want to be able to get as close to the highway as possible.
Yeah. Okay. So anything else on, on this one before we move on to the rest of the warrant? No? Thank you for all your work you've done on this as well. And, and the other one, the other marijuana article Barney, is your very, your eye is very beneficial. I don't know what we'll ever do when the day comes that you retire.
Thank you.
He's not.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
All right, so I did just have the other remaining annual town meeting warrant articles put on here in case we wanted to talk about procedure, anything. Bill, where are we at on being able, no one's come forward on the articles that we're moving, at what point those struck? I think it's like tomorrow or the next day. We're really close, right?
The 21st is this Thursday, but I, as we had a conversation with the town clerk about that, he's, he wants to leave it on just a little bit longer because he's going to file with the state so they can actually conduct the review. I'm told that that review will be fairly quick. And I know that Katie's been working with him, so I know, so if you can just, I'll let Katie respond more specifically. Go ahead, Katie.
Yep, no, completely right. So he sent in his submission, this is Bob Cutler, for today. And he said that it should be a really quick turnaround because Thursday, right, would be the 21st day. So he was hoping by the beginning of next week. So a couple more days to hopefully leave those on. But he said he hadn't heard any resident concern. So hopefully, like Bill said, just a quick turnaround and those can be deleted off the warrant.
So we will actually delete them off, so the final warrant will have those actually removed. I wasn't sure if
You, you as a board will take that action to remove them.
Okay, great. All right. And then as far as just the other warrant articles, are we, are we all good on just really anything else? Like, is everyone comfortable with the canvassing one, Bill? Especially the chief of police? I know Bob Cutler looked at it. You know, again, I feel like everyone's looked at it, but I'm just making sure that, that we're good, everyone's comfortable with the rest of them that are on here.
So the, the AdCom has taken all these items under consideration. They have just a few items still left on there for, up for consideration. One is, is the marijuana article and the billboard article because they're final, being finalized, I think. And then, and the other one was the, was one of the, the proposals from the, from the residents regarding the sidewalk. They're still considering that one as well.
Okay.
So, but, but they have acted already and have supported all the, all the articles. I think there was just one dissenting vote on one of them. But I do think that they, they were all passed almost unanimously. The, the budget was approved unanimously by the board as well. So there was no, actually, I take that back, there was one, there was one, the library budget was, there were two dissenting votes on the library budget for the additional position.
Okay. And then the other thing I just wanted to talk to the group about was the Foxborough reporter. So, you know, obviously, one of the citizen petitions has us thinking. I know we were not posting the warrant in the Foxborough reporter. And I don't think that we'll ever probably get back to posting the entire warrant in the Foxborough reporter. But, you know, we did have Katie get pricing for, you know, what do we, do we want to take out an ad to say, you know, go to www.foxboroughma.gov, the warrant's available? You know, other ways to communicate with, you know, the orpheum sign that we can put stuff on or, you know, Chris's flashing highway sign, do we put that in front of town hall? Or, you know, wherever it may be. But I don't think that we've talked about the reporter as a group. Just something, I said, what does it cost? Like, I was, you know, just kind of curious, and do we have the budget to do it? And I think it was going to be around $500 just to print something notifying everyone that the, like, she even got printing for, like, putting an insert of the warrant, like, every option. But I think the, the most reasonable one, you know, is probably to have some sort of ad saying that it's available if anyone's not on the computer, you know, and still gets, that probably is the group that does still get the paper and it would be in there, you know. And we could probably add other things, like, you know, when Bill's session's going to be, when, you know, remember the election is the date. So in addition to letting people know the warrants are there, I think we can work to design, you know, kind of all the key things that we want to hit. And maybe some, some little ad that would be between $500 and $700, depending on placement and the exact size.
Do we, do we find out, say we did want to have the warrant mailed out, you know, one per home of, of registered voters? I mean, obviously, we're not going to send one to each registered voter. Did we find out, you know, like, say we did, you know, both, you know, using
Double sided.
Double sided, or did we find out what
I think we got that a while ago. I think you gave us a swag estimate.
Yeah, so if you did, if, there's about 7,000 homes in Foxborough. And if you were to, just the mailing them alone would, would be expensive, even as a bulk mail would be expensive. But even printing it on both sides, you're still looking at, how many pages, Katie? On both pages, both sides?
About 32.
About 32 pages. So, so that's not, that's not a cheap document. You're probably looking at a minimal cost of maybe a dollar to 50 cents, maybe, for each document.
That's a $10,000.
I thought I heard seven, the number 7,000 sticks in my mind that we had swags.
Well, it'd be at least 7,000, just, that includes most of the postage.
Right. But we could also put in the ad that, you know, hard copies are available at the front desk.
Right.
I mean
I think you could put, the library could have a copy. You could have one here, you could have one at the Council on Asian, different locations throughout town.
And get that together, but
Public safety.
Public safety.
Just like I thought, putting one in every single reporter might be a lot, you know, mailing one to every house. You're going to have people on the other side that are going to think that's, you know, from an environmental perspective, you know, too much. So trying to meet somewhere in the middle, because I do think it is a great idea. And I do think there is a population that we, that we need to capture, that I think, I, I am in favor of us putting something in the paper if we're able to do that. And then we'd even ask the question, if we got back to doing that, would the reporter print the AdCom recommendations? Because my understanding that they used to do that for us, you know, because we had the warrant printed. So I think that's still a question. And they do have a, someone had mentioned, don't they have a budget, too, if they wanted to put it in the, in the reporter?
I think, um, did Frank say, tell us that they printed the warrant because, or maybe it was the opposite. We paid for the warrant and so they printed the AdCom recommendations for free. The opposite, right?
Yeah, they only have a budget of 350, so they're definitely not running a big, uh.
Yeah.
Advisory, I just happen to have my budget book in front of me, so.
And that's probably dropped, why do I feel like it might have been 2,000 at one point or something like that?
500 or something.
You know, so it might have, since there are
There is a budget in there for salary, for note taking.
That's, that's probably why.
Yeah, that's probably what you're remembering, because that is much chunkier, I'm looking at just expenses.
Yeah. But, I mean, the only, the only thing is, yeah, I mean, we can do a much better job of, of getting people. I mean, it, it does kind of stink, too, because, you know, I mean, we still get the reporter, but a lot of people don't get the reporter anymore because it's gotten so small now. We still do, we will, if ours exists, we will.
We should validate, Katie, because I know I talk to people that, you know, they do get it online and make sure that it is highlighted online. You know, if we do run the ad, to make sure, I know some ads may get lost, but I don't know if they can put it in as like, or if we can even put it in an article. You know, I'm sure there'll be something in there, but just as much as we can get it in the electronic version as well.
Yeah, because it's definitely, like you said, Leah, it's, you know, and it would, if people were a little more informed before town meeting,
Yep.
it wouldn't be as many questions. But the fact still remains that if this, so, so the article was, was recommended by AdCom then, right? Because you said there was only a couple that they didn't, Bill? Is that what you said? So AdCom
John Schlevek, was that one approved by AdCom?
Yes, it was, it was not approved, that was not approved.
Oh, not approved, okay.
It was not approved, yeah.
They liked the concept.
And so do we. Yeah, I think we all like the concept, so what do we do to execute?
I think there was, yeah, so I misspoke when I said they all approved. The, the, there was the one article they didn't approve and there was, there was one budget where there was a dissenting, two dissenting votes. But, but the one article, they, they, I think that was a vote of like one to seven to one, something like that.
What was great is it started the conversation, which is why we're talking about it now. I would lean more towards, you know, putting that $500 towards an ad and, and have that specifically say where across the state, where across the town you could get a hard copy
Yep.
or where you can get the electronic version. I, I think that's good. Do we, as a selectman, have a little budget?
We can, we can make that work.
I mean, even we could tell someone, hey, if you want one mailed to you, you know, reach out to us by this date. You know, I'm sure that we won't be fulfilling too many of them, but hey, you know, it's just any way we can get this in front of people. Because I don't think any of us want to sit in front of an empty room and restart this from scratch either. We want everyone to be as in the know as can be. So I think it sounds like we're all in favor then, you know, of moving forward with that ad. Obviously, let us know if it goes much beyond, you know, what we originally discussed. But, you know, we can design the ad or they'll even do it, they'll even do it for us if you just give them the data. I think we just want to make sure that we get everything in there. And we did look at the newspaper when we were talking about it. We said we probably wanted it in there on like the 21st. The 28th is probably too late, you know, before the election. So I think we were looking at the, was it the 20, it was either the 21st or 28th.
The 28th, because the 21st is school vacation.
Yes, right. So the 28th is when we'll be looking to, to run this, since the reporter comes out on Thursday, so. And that would be
If you run it on the 28th, then you miss advertising for Bill's review of the warrant, because that's on the 27th, just as a reminder.
Okay. So maybe we do the 20, the 21st then? I mean, people, even if they're away for school vacation, are still going to get the paper when they get back.
Okay, well, and then we can, yeah, and then afterwards, after town meeting, we can, you know, so, you know, we're talking, you know, this article could still pass. So even, you know
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can do what we think is best for this year or whatever. And if it does pass, then we might have a different conversation.
And we really should have a good firm number, like, on, on what this will cost us per year. Actually, twice a year, not per year. And, you know, I'm of the opinion personally, I don't think it should just be planning articles, I think it should be the whole warrant, like
Oh, yeah. And well, and I, what I think is, you know, what happens is zoning articles and stuff like that changes things that, and then, you know, people say, oh, I didn't even, I didn't know.
Well, someone could say that, too. Well, someone could say that, too, about the marijuana, which is a zoning article, or the sign bylaw, which isn't a zoning article. So I think those two articles right there show why you don't want to limit it to just those.
Oh, I'm agreeing with you, but I'm saying, I think that's what was driving them, and then the thought, once, once, I think you were the first person to say, geez, you know, well, what about the whole warrant?
Right, everything else, yeah.
Because, yeah, so.
I mean, it's tough, though. We're, we live in a time that, you know, I feel like we're really trying to get information out there, but it's, it's really hard to engage people, you know, so. Any feedback anyone has about how it's best, I love how Christina did the, the survey, you know, leaving town meeting, but, you know, that's only people that are there, so maybe we got to think about it at a farmer's market, or at Founder's Day, or at Concert on the Common, you know, how do you best prefer to get this information so we can gather everything possible to put into Christina's communication plan.
I think Founder's Day is probably one of the biggest events in town, so that's probably a really good one to, to do it up.
Yeah, all right. All right, so I think we're good. We're taking our positions and closing the warrant both on the 12th, correct? Or are we closing it and taking our positions on the 26th? I know this is in front of me, but the calendar's so tiny that-
The board will be approving and signing on the 12th.
Okay, and taking our positions?
Yes.
You can, you can take your positions afterwards. You don't have to take them the same way you signed.
Yeah, we could take our positions on the 26th.
You could do that.
Although, okay. Any, any strong feelings one way or the other?
Just, so approving it is like closing it.
Closing the warrant, yep.
It's, well, it's closed, but now you're signing it.
Yeah, so, yeah, signing the warrant.
You're signing the warrant at this point.
Signing it and approving it to go forward.
Signing concludes, concludes all, all the, the changes to it, so there'll be no further changes to the document. Then it gets, then it gets posted.
Approving it to move forward.
Yes.
Taking positions, we could do that night, or we could do the meeting after.
I don't know what that means, taking, like-
Like, I, Seth, and in favor of this article, this citizen's petition, this one. So that's actually taking your personal positions. I think we do it all at one night.
I'll do that at town meeting. I don't need to do that here.
Okay. Okay.
Well, just so you know, um-
That brings us-
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
Brings us right back to Steph.
Yeah, I think, I think Steph feels very passionately about that one.
Well, no, 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 but that, that's fine. I just want to, if, if for some reason Seth doesn't want to, I just want you guys to know that, I, I know I've said it before, but just a reminder that I'm going to be out of the country for three weeks. I'm going to try to zoom in, but, um-
When are you gone? When, when, what meetings are you gone for?
Um, two, the 12th and the-
26th?
26th. So it all, all depends. I've, originally, I was going to be on my own, but now my mother and my sister are joining me, and that's, that first week will be there. They're last night before they fly home, so I don't know whether-
Do you have a preference then? Because I don't, I think you're kind of driving this, that you want this.
Well, what do you mean, the position?
Yeah, the position.
It's just, just for our, it's just for ours, right?
And the citizen's petitions.
Okay.
So is, does, does the 12th or 26th work better for you? Because I have no preference which night we do it.
Probably out of them, it probably would be the 26th, but I, I just, like, you know, because I'm on vacation, I don't know what'll be going on and, and whatnot. But, no, why I was saying it was, I did want to make sure then, you guys, like, if Seth doesn't want to do it, then you only have two of you.
Right.
So-
Well, you can still remotely do it, if you dial in.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I mean, but if, for some reason, if I don't get to dial in-
Okay.
My intent is to try to.
Okay, yeah, no, we, we get it.
But that's why when Seth was like, I don't really need to do it, I was just kind of like, okay, so that means, like, it's just you and Doc.
Me and Doc looking at each other.
Your turn, all right, my turn.
Okay. Well, I'm, like I said, I don't care which ones, if one works better for you, then let's go with the 26th.
Well, and, you know, and just so you guys know, I mean, I don't, I don't feel like I'm going to object to any of them myself. I think, I think, other than, I, I myself would probably, I don't know if this is okay to say this ahead of time, I probably wouldn't support the sidewalk one for myself, only because of how it's funded. We don't know how that's funded.
And, you know, we might take positions and then change our meeting, like, the town meeting, which is also okay, too, you know, that's, that's certainly allowed, so.
But, I mean, so anything, whatever you guys, however you guys process you want to go, I would think-
Okay.
Everything sponsored by us, I would be a go with, and I think anything we would vote on, I would, I would be comfortable with, with supporting.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good to know. So we'll, we'll close-
26th.
Yep, well, so we will, for the agenda, is the 12th, close and sign the warrant, and then the 26th, take our positions on the citizen's petitions and the Board of Selectmen-sponsored articles. Okay, so I think we're done with the warrant discussion. Um, budget, oh, I forgot, we've got another big topic after this.
Well, you know, not just because you, if Seth didn't, I'm thinking then you don't, you don't have enough people to vote, right?
Well, but we're not taking-
That's why, that's why I just wanted to know that, okay.
We're not taking a vote, we're taking a position, so it can still be abstained. Yeah, it's not binding, so it can still be, you know-
Okay.
Zero, 211, because we're not moving, it's, it's not changing anything.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I forgot, we still have the budget to get through, so let's, let's get back on track. All right.
So just a couple, a couple changes that have occurred since the last time we talked about the budget, which is, you know, actually, it was several weeks, several months ago, actually, weeks ago, I should say. There were two outstanding numbers that we were waiting on, and that was on the insurance side, and the health insurance, the risk management number was up very minimal, was only up about $10,000 versus the number that we carried. So, so the, that's another, we're going, our request number really is, is the same, should be the same number as, instead of the, the, the budget numbers. We got to, we got to fix, fix that. And then, and then also, the, the other number was the group insurance, group insurance number, which was a little bit higher than, than we anticipated as well. That was about 3.75% versus originally, we carried 2.5%. So it was up about 1.25% in terms of what we originally estimated. So we're going to have to change both those numbers to the request column, because that's the way it's preferred here in Foxborough.
So our, our motion tonight is as proposed and as amended?
Right. Yes.
Which one are you recommending?
I, I do, I do the, the, I would recommend it as, as amended.
Yep.
What was the total impact, Bill?
The total impact is 79, 79,000, 79 million, 972,00668, and it's up about 2.91% now with those two new changes.
So what I'm saying is, between the prior version and this version, the incremental?
Yeah, it was incremental about 2, 0.2%.
Which is how much?
In, in terms of dollars, it was, you would ask me that question. I, I can't, I can't tell you, Seth. I don't, I don't have that number in front of me.
Was, was George on here?
Yeah, George is on.
George, George, you on? Do you have that number? The previous number, George? George?
Just give me one moment.
I, I, I don't have the previous number. I only have the, the most, the latest budget.
Yeah.
Well, I have the book in front of me. As proposed.
80 million times 0.2%?
No, point, it would be, it would be a fraction of a, yeah, 0.2%, yes.
Unfortunately, I can't do that in my head.
I want to say it was like-
Like 160,000?
Yeah, roughly.
6, 200.
Yeah, 160.
160.
160,000, I think was the difference.
Okay, all right.
And that's made up, again, sorry, just to repeat-
Mostly, mostly from health insurance. There was, there was also the Southeastern Mass school that was up a little bit slightly as well.
But that-
Oh, I'm sorry, which was the caveat right from the beginning?
Right, we didn't know what that number was going to be.
We knew that right from the beginning, that that might change.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So George, just to make a, a very important point, is that the, the, the request number cannot exceed the, 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 the budget, the budget numbers. We got to make sure, make that adjustment.
Okay, very good.
All right, I guess the only, and the only two questions I have is, so where did you, your recommendation, Bill, where did you go with the new library position?
So I had, I didn't, I had actually included it in the budget proposal, and then it was, and that was the one you saw originally, as well as the, the AdCom. They, they debated it quite extensively, and in the end, they actually voted to support it. So it was, there were two dissenting votes, however, on the, on the committee.
Okay. So I guess, I guess, just for me, I wouldn't support that. It has nothing to do with library, has nothing to do what department it is, has with just the direction we gave you, with no new positions. I have two, and the other one is, and I know numbers aren't here yet, I'm not really in favor of the reorganization, if it's going to change. I know it's same people, but I feel like we created a new position that's probably going to pay more money.
So that number's actually included in the budget? That's not going to increase the budget?
Yeah, but there will be, obviously, there will be more money. I'm assuming, I'm assuming.
Well, not actually, because the net, the net effect will not be, will be de minimis. Because, don't forget, there were, there were people that came and went, and there were actually, there were savings in both those departments to do that.
Yeah, but for me, this is just me. It's, it's the same people, but you created a new position that will pay more money, the position itself. So for me, that, I feel like that-
With more responsibility.
Yeah, so I feel like that-
But there's also another position that will go away, that someone has brought in at a lower position.
Oh, no, I'm not, I know the dollars will offset, but the direction we gave was no new positions. So to me, the reorganization created a new position, not a new person, but a new position.
There is, there is that, no increase in that number of people, just as a result.
It doesn't matter, Bill, doesn't matter. If there was going to be savings, because, you know, that happens all the time. Somebody new comes in, they come into a lower, but the direction I felt like the board gave you was not to add any new positions. So it, you know, then that would have showed us savings for us. Like, for me, it's not just balancing the money, it's the direction we gave. So I feel like in library, and then with the reorganization, and I'm still not, I, I know I called and asked you, I wasn't sure about, I'm using Paige's name just because that's who the person is, has nothing to do with Paige either, but the overseeing of those departments. I had a couple of people reach out to me and say, well, and I know I called you and said, is there any conflict there? You know, because planning comes before. You told me that, that communities go in that direction, and somebody who deals with municipal, I said, they haven't seen this in any other community, that type of stuff.
It's actually not true. I can, I can give you multiple examples of it.
Yeah, but for me, it's, it doesn't even matter. It has nothing, it has nothing to pay, it has, have nothing to do with the people who are in those positions. It's just that we reorganized, created a new position, same person, but a new position, and I just felt like that was not what the board gave you.
By definition, I, I don't think that's a new, just my, I understand totally what you're saying-
Yeah.
But I think of a new position as an add to FT, whether it's part-time, full-time. So I don't think that a reorg, in my opinion, with the direction that we gave about no new positions, I don't think that we've created any new positions in town hall.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a position with a different title-
A position that has changed.
With a different title and dollars added to it. I think the whole reason why we were trying to stay away from, from new positions, because we were trying to keep the budget a little leaner this year. So not only, so, like I said, has, for me, it doesn't matter who the moving parts are. It just, you know, it, it became a position with another title and with more dollars added to that.
No, I think we all, we all get. I guess, I would just say on the other side that I wouldn't think that's a new position.
I mean, just to throw my two cents in, Worth, I, I can't disagree with you about the library, but I, I do disagree with you about the reorg. I think the reorganization to make that department more efficient, I mean, we're splitting hairs, but I don't consider that a new position.
Well, well, those, that, those were overseen by the town manager, who we were, you know, I mean, we, we paid Bill what we pay him to have a good town manager and to oversee those. So now, we, we've just, we've, we've shifted them to somebody else. And I'll be honest with you, I didn't even think about it until tonight, till, I think, Doc, you, when you said, or Liam, I said, Paige wasn't expected to come back into this. Like, I almost feel, too, this is no, nothing against Paige. It's, it's a lot for any one person to be doing their job and now overseeing, you know, inspections, you know, conservation and stuff when, when she's got a lot on her plate. By no means, Paige, if you're still on, I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm just saying it's just, you know, for me, that's just my, my opinion. It, when it, when it added dollars to the position, that's what, to me, the, the reorganization did. Has nothing to do with which departments. I'm not, you know, you know, and just, just like I was about library, same thing. It was just, I kind of thought the direction and the, the reason why I thought we were going in that direction to keep the budget leaner. And so, e- even though the, the dollars are saved because somebody left, somebody came in at a lower number, within a year or two, those numbers will creep right down.
Yeah, no, I think we all get the, the bottom line of what you're saying.
Yeah, so anyhow, I just wanted to say, those were the only two real problems I had with the budget.
Anything?
Nope.
Okay. So I think we're ready for a motion for, probably for the budget as amended. And I feel like the most controversial thing could be this new position. So do we take a vote to approve the budget as amended and, and then look at that position separately? Or, because I just, I don't, what's your recommendation?
So-
Or we can also just vote on that at town meeting floor, too. Like, I'm sure that will be pulled out as a line item.
They could pull it out.
So I'm not really concerned about it. I'm, I'm comfortable with moving to approve the 2023 budget as amended.
I agree.
And whereof that position falls. Like you said-
Well, but, but if we don't really support it, and that's not the direction we gave, I mean, listen, I can, I can bite on, I, like, like Doc said, he doesn't agree with me with the reorganization, but if we, if our stand was, and, and if it's a difference of opinion on what's a new position, the library one is definitely a new position. I think we'll, we could, we would all, I don't speak for anybody, we would all agree upon that. The other one, I see it one way, if you guys see it different, that, that's fine. You know, I, I don't have a problem with how you guys see that. That's your opinion. But I would say that we, if we don't support that position, we should, we should not recommend the budget with that position.
So I think the, the only reason I'm, I'm pausing here is because the library position is under a separately, separately elected board. And I, I always caution you to get involved in other people's budgets when they, when they, and I've heard that stated here multiple times, that, you know, the board gives direction. Ultimately, you could say individually that you don't support it, but if you want to take a position as a board, you're entitled to do that, too. But I, you know, where there is separately, separately elected board, I'm not sure I would-
And the library did come in, you know, I think there could be a million questions about that. Like, if you could find that money, why didn't we find it before, you know, to, to support this position? But they did come in.
And that was the effort that they put into it, so.
But, but, you know, Bill, you're saying that, but it, we're going to make a recommendation on the budget. I mean, but, you know, and, and it's still going to be voted on town floor, but, you know.
So you have, you have, you have the, the options here, so there are multiple options.
I mean, it's the same thing. Why, why wouldn't we pull out the school, then? School has autonomy. And, and so, i- if you would say that, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we sit here and say, well, let's pull the school budget out, too?
Because no one's disagreeing with the school budget, and we're talking about maybe not supporting the position.
No, but I mean, Bill's point of where they're, where they're a, an elected board, they still, they still, they're still being paid, paid by the taxpayers of the town, whether they're, you know, so, I mean, my opinion would be, if we don't support a new position, then we just vote it that way, you know?
So, vote to approve the budget as amended, without the new position?
That's, that's what I would suggest, that would be my suggestion.
So that, that, that could be, you know, put into the form of a motion, or you could come up with a different motion, but that could be a motion.
My, my thought is, because it is a separately voted-on board, the Board of Trustees, as the school committee is, in the school budget, personally, I would accept Bill's budget as approved, and let the townspeople discuss any issues they might have with any school, any line item.
Any line, yeah, school, yeah.
But, but the thing is, Doc, we didn't, as a board, we didn't give a direction for no new positions. To, school didn't bring in a new position.
No, no, I understand that, but, but, but library, under their autonomy, did, and I think-
They don't, they don't have autonomy, like the schools do. So, so, they, they, they have a Board of Trustees, but then, then why, then why are we, why do we even look at their budget, then? I, you know, I mean, and for me, it has nothing to do with libraries, it's principle. And that, that's why I, I don't care whether they have a Board of Trustees or not. The principle was that, that that's the direction we gave. And for me, that the fact that you find money somewhere else to fund something else, that if you found the savings, you should find the savings, especially where we're coming off COVID years. So, and this has nothing, for me, it's principle, not the library. You know, so I don't want anyone to feel like I'm going against anything to do with library. It's just, it's just the prin- principle.
Yeah, honestly, I, I don't know. I think it's going to be interesting to see which way that goes on town meeting floor with any line item.
Yeah.
So I'm comfortable with moving to approve the budget as amended, and then, you know, letting any line item, whether, whether it be, and I get, on principle, in black and white, but it, I just think it's maybe not as black and white, where they did come in within the, within the direction, even though that was, and I believe it's not a full-time position, it's a part, it's a part-time position. Not that that makes any difference, but just, I had looked at that myself, and was interested, so, I mean, I think I'd be-
Oh, and if you guys are okay with the position, then that's fine. I think my, my, what I'm saying is, it doesn't matter that they have their own trustees.
No, we, we get it.
That's, you know, if, if we, that's the direction we were going to go in, and if you guys have changed your minds from the time we gave that direction to Bill, then you can do that, too. But, the, you know, I don't agree with, because they have a Board of Trustees, that that changes our recommendation to the town.
All right, so-
I mean, AdCom, I'm guessing AdCom didn't go to Bill and say, no new positions. So, and, and their recommendation is their recommendation, they're, you know, separate from ours, but we were the one that gave the direction, so.
All right, I think we're ready for a motion as amended, and see where this, where this falls with us, and then what happens at town meeting.
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 budget as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good, good discussion, though, for sure. So next, we have the Assistant Town Manager's update, and I had asked Mike to really focus, last meeting, we talked about the town manager evaluation, and Mike and Bill went back and forth to come up with a schedule for what it would look like, just, you know, we're all busy. You know I love a schedule to keep us on track if we don't have one thing slip. So, actually, what's in here is not, not the latest, sorry. Mike, this isn't, this isn't, what's in Board Docs? Oh, you have, we don't have this, do we?
You should have, the schedule was sent by email. You should have the, the goals, I think, attached to Board Docs.
Yeah, but the, Bill had to change the schedule, that's not reflected here.
And I'm, I'm going to put, I'm going to put the schedule up, up here.
Okay.
And then I can talk to it as well. So, as, as the Chair mentioned, we wanted to talk about the process and the schedule for doing the town manager's evaluation this year, based on the goals and objectives that, that you set almost a year ago. So the, the steps for this evaluation process, I would recommend that these be the, the steps, and then the next slide, we'll get into, you know, when, what the deadlines are. So starting with the town manager's self-evaluation to the board through an online portal, and then, individual board members having meetings with the manager to, to discuss the last year with the manager, prior to actually submitting their evaluations through the online portal individually. Those evaluations, through the portal, will go to the Chair, and then myself, as the HR Director, will be there to guide the process, but not to influence the evaluations individually or in summary.
So, changes from last year, sorry, are you going to get to that, or are you going to highlight that here?
I was going to mention it, but I was going to mention right here. So, and this has changed a little bit year to year. Last year, the Human Resources Specialist was there for process guidance, and assisting the Chair, and, and actually, she came in and actually presented the summary evaluation last year to the board and, and to the public. What I would suggest this year is that the, and, and I did talk this over with the Chair, is that, that I help to guide the process, but that the Chair do the summary evaluation, and then that the, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen present that summary evaluation to the board.
So the, the change, you know, in the past, HR was putting together, not to go back to Mary Beth Sethold, the essence of the reviews, you know, and kind of picking and choosing what went in. I'm comfortable doing it, because I've done this before, and I'm comfortable with putting that together, and I think it takes out some of the, you know, people, there's been some concern about, you know, Mike reports into Bill, and he's putting the summary together. So, you know, a change to the process would be that they would come to me, and I do just want to check on, make sure this, I know I went to a training for OML about evaluation, so I just want to brush up and make sure I'm all good, that there's no concerns there. But then, I would put together the summary and present that to the board, instead of HR doing that. If, everyone cool with that? Okay, all right, and then, I know, you know, I don't think we'll be able to get in the 360 both between now and then, but I encourage all of you, and I know there's former selectmen that used to do this, go out and talk to Chris, go out and talk to Paige, go out and talk to, you know, whoever it may be, and take that and, and bring that into your evaluation, you know, as you see fit. And I think that this process here follows everything that I've seen in my professional, you know, career, where you do a self-evaluation, having a meeting before you do the, the evaluation is completely normal as well, so I-
So, can I ask you a question? So, because last year was the first time I did it. I thought it was kind of strange, but you, you do this all the time. I thought it was strange that we would look at Bill's self-evaluation before we did it, because, you know, I thought to myself, like, would it skew?
No, I think that's, I work for an HR consulting firm, and us personally, this is our, you guys, you know, this is the normal process.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I, like I said, I have no idea. I just thought it was funny that I would see how he valued himself before I did mine.
Well, you would have your own thoughts in your mind, and, you know, quite frankly, I don't care if Bill rates himself as a five, if I think he's a three on a certain task. I mean, you know, it's more for the feedback to him, to be like, hey, how are we so off from our, you know?
Well, and I kind of know that you do this all the time, so it's like, I was like, well, Lee's not bringing it up, but, you know me, if it's in the springhead, it's coming out the mouth, so.
So, same, so.
And, and I would agree with that, so that, and, and that's from, from military to corporate, to, to state, federal government, to, to municipal government. That, that is a standard practice, and so from the, from the day I graduated from college, I've been involved in evaluations in the military, and it starts with self-evaluation. That self-eva- evaluation should inform the supervisor, but not influence the supervisor. So if somebody is, you know, rating themselves as, as all fives, when five is the top of the chart, that should become part of the discussion, when, when the supervisor really sees someone as a four, or a three, or a two. And that should be, you know, you, you should kind of reset the expectations or the self-perception. Well, I see myself as a superstar, well, let's see some areas of improvement. Or, I've also seen people that underrate themselves.
Mm-hmm, I, yep, same, it can go either way. So, this is totally normal process. The only thing that's different in Board Docs that Bill added is this individual meetings with the manager, that's not on what you have here, that's, that's in this PowerPoint, so.
Can we go back to that for a quick second? Is that earlier in the process than we did in the past?
Yeah, so-
Didn't we, didn't we do it after?
Yeah, so, and it's, I actually think, I'm used to seeing it done the other way, where it's the, the self-evaluation, then meeting with the individual board members, and then the board members do their evaluation, then submit it to the, to the Chairman for evaluation, for summary. Right, because what happens through that is that things get clarified during, during the, the meeting with the individual board members, and things can be discussed at length, areas of improvement, things of that nature, so that, when they, and then, or, or areas there that are things that, you know, you wish you could have seen done differently, but also, there's a lot of things that come up that are just not clarified for the individual board member, and I think that's an opportunity to do that.
And the timing is different. So Bill's contract is seven-one, whereas before, I, I, don't quote me on it, but I want to say, it was four-one or five-one, and the board was changing over.
It was April, it was the middle of the year.
It was April, so, it was, it was in a weird time, and his new con, this aligns with his new contract, that we have to have it done before his seven-one contract. I think it's also more continuous for turnover on the board, something we should keep in mind as we bring, you know, the next person in. So that timing is a little different as well.
The next person will be part of this process?
Yes and no.
No, no, you, you wouldn't include a person who's only on the board for a month.
Well, that's what I, that's what I thought.
No, no, oh, sorry, I thought you meant the new, new town manager. No, this will just be us, but, you know, we're lucky that no one rolled off, you know? It's always tough this time of year with the changeover, but these dates here made the most sense, and now, the new board member will not be a part of this.
And last year, we met with Bill after-
Right, but this is-
After we, we're going to meet before.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So this process is actually the same process that the town manager uses evaluating Directors and Department Heads. So they do their self eval, those come to me, Bill and I sit with, with each Department Head, Director, and then he, he sits and goes through Goods, Beds, and Others, has a discussion, and then after that is when he actually writes his evaluation. And then, there's an opportunity for those Directors and, and Department Heads to make comment after he's done his evaluation.
And I, I would even argue, I wouldn't even think HR has to be part of that Department Head. Like, I would think that's a process that Bill can manage with his Department Heads. Like, I know, we're not, like, HR is not involved in every, you know?
So, I would say that's true, if it was just strictly HR, but he's also the Assistant Town Manager.
Yeah, okay.
Does a lot of the operational side, and so, he actually is, interacts with a lot of the managers on a regular basis, so it's important to have that input.
Okay, that makes sense. And then the only thing I would ask of you, which I know was a stickler on this last time, is the goals exactly as we approve them. I know there was some, you know, slight changes to them, but I want to make sure that we just stick to them word for word, no matter what may make sense or not, and talk about it.
Whatever you saw at the midpoint, it'll be the same thing.
Okay, and then, you know, obviously, I, I just don't want it to be a fire drill with this new tool. Like, I want to make sure we have enough time, that we understand it, and that, you know, a lot of times, there can be kinks, I just, I just don't want us to slip it all because of the tool, because we are moving to it, I feel like every year, we talk about moving to it, and we're not there, so we just said, let's do it.
Okay, so for due dates, the self-evaluation, Bill's going to have that available to him by May 10th, and his self-evaluation will be due to the portal by May 24th. And then meetings with, with the individual board members with, with Bill will be expected between May 25th, and due by June 6th. And that's an opportunity for board members to individually meet with Bill to discuss evaluation issues and/or highlights. And then, the individual board member evaluations should be submitted to the, to the online portal by June 7th, and that will give the Chair between June 8th to the 16th to put together that summary evaluation, and for Leah to be able to present that.
Well, I may not be Chair on June 21st, so we can't assume it's going to be me.
No, but it, it would still be.
I would still put together, I will not be here June 21st, so, I know that I'm away that day. I had not realized that earlier, so we will just have to think about that.
Okay, so we could move it earlier? The next meeting after that would be?
The 14th.
Well, it's either July 5th or July 7th, June 7th. Sorry, we don't have a meeting on the 14th.
Right, okay, so I didn't realize you weren't going to be here.
I didn't either, I apologize, until I just looked and figured this out, so.
So we can, we can adjust that.
Okay, all right, yeah, well, just so you know, we may have to adjust that.
General timeline.
But, do we agree that regardless if you're Chair or not Chair?
I should do it, yeah, I hadn't thought of that, yeah.
Yeah, you definitely should, that's the way it's always been, now.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So, and so the, the evaluations are based on the goals. Here are just the, the goal headings, so you, you have them in front of you, but, you know, the first one for the, for the public's, you know, information. Goal one is promote and enhance financial health of the town. Goal two, communication through community engagement. Goal three, businesses smart economic development. Goal four, promote modern and professional town operations. And then, I do have here in the background the goals with all the sub-objectives.
Yeah, no, we don't need to go through that.
And I didn't think you wanted to go through it. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity, if you had any questions of me, of the purpose, process, timeline, responsibilities of anyone involved, or other questions you might have for me.
Okay.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, seems-
Thank you.
Seems good, we've got a plan.
So we'll work on the date for that presentation of the, of the summary evaluation. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Bill, we've got a couple meetings here, a couple items here, sorry.
Yeah, just a couple items here. With respect to the opera conversation with Congressman Okafor, we had, there were, there were two levels of, of opera, which I'll discuss briefly tonight. The first level was the meeting that we've been, was one that we've been working on for quite some time. The second level was the one that we had met with Congressman Okafor just this past week, because he's looking for projects that are going to be paid for through the state amount of money that's coming through, through the state, which is a, a multi-billion dollar amount of money. They're looking for larger projects that we could look, we could submit for on a regional basis. And, and, and some of the big projects that we've been looking at were, of course, the, the interchange at Route 140 and, and 95, that would have tied into the, into the housing project that was slated for Walnut Street. The other one is, is, it's been talked about for years, is, is the sewer-ing of, of Route, of Route 1. Both projects come with a pretty big ticket. The, the estimated cost for the, the Route 1 sewer project would be about $25 million. And so, we haven't seen, since the 1980s, we've not seen federal money for these kinds of projects. So this is kind of a unique opportunity that if we don't ask now, we, we may not see it again for another 20, 30 years. So I think this is the opportunity to raise these kind of questions, and raise these kind of projects. We had a good conversation with the Congressman, sort of laid out all the, Leah was part of the conversation. We had a, sort of laid out all the, the priorities or things that we'd like to get done. We also talked about maybe doing a, the wastewater in the street, the street, the sewer-
Stormwater.
Stormwater, thank you, stormwater, stormwater program here in Foxborough, and that, he could actually help with that process as well. The project that we, you know, we initiated, initially discussed was the 140 project, and that, and 95, and that, that project was, is not on the, on the STIP, which is the, the state T, Transportation Improvement Program. And so, that, we, we then, we then were able to find out the process for doing that, and we've actually initiated that process with, with this, with the District, District Office, and, and for the Mass TOT, so we're going, we're in that process of getting that put on the list. As soon as that happens, the Congressman said he could push a lot harder to try and get the funding for that project. All right? The second piece of that was the, the, the ongoing opera issue that we've had with the, with this, with Norfolk County. And, and as luck would have it, I actually had a conversation with, with US Treasury Department today about that particular aspect, and, and unfortunately, I didn't get the answer that I was hoping for. But, but, you know, it just, it just blows my mind how they could actually be so, so, misunderstanding of how this process works, but it's true. They don't really get how we operate here in Massachusetts. And as a result, we're somewhat unique, and as a result, they don't, they're not interested in, in changing the rules because of that. So as a result, what they tried to do was to, was to take our existing projects that we'd like to continue to, to possibly fund through the, the county funds, and then actually see if we can actually fit them into their existing buckets of, of funding, and how that could be worked. So, I'm in the process of doing that now, I actually, they actually gave me some guidance on that, which was helpful. I'm just not certain that the guidance is going to be, is sustainable, based upon what they highly described in reading the regulations that they currently have. So, I, I think what they tried to do was say, look, we can't make that work, but we'll try and give you, you know, we'll try and fit it into the existing buckets if we can. So that's where we're at right now. Not to say that, that our congressional delegation has done, has done handstands on it, they really have. But I just don't sense, see, sense that Treasury is interested in, in making any further changes at this point in time. Want to come in that front, because they're still taking testimony from a couple of the towns, and they're in the same position we are, so we're going to try and work as hard as we can to, to make that happen. But, if worse comes to worse, we can probably fit other projects within buckets. You know, it won't be the best situation, but we'll, we'll do the best we can to make it all work. So that's, that's what is on, on the, on the, on the opus discussion. As far as the, the town property approvals, we had a couple on the common. One's dealing with the to-be or not-to-be, which is, which is a, another library project, which is on, slated for August 3rd. Another one is the Foxborough Horseshoe League, slated to expire, which will, which will start and then expire, which will start now, but then, the permit will expire on September 30th of this year. And then finally, the, and the, the project with the JCs, which will, which will expire on June, on May 15th, and that is for their, the vendors will set up, they, they will do their JCs presentation on the common.
We're going to talk about that more next week, in the, next meeting, when the JCs come in, because we're going to talk about that car show.
Yeah, the car show, yeah.
So, I just told them, they can save that and talk about everything at once on that one.
And finally, Mike and I are both going to be attending the, the Northeast Regional ICMA meeting next week in Boston, Wednesday afternoon through Friday afternoon. So, that, we'll get the latest information on what's happening on the federal level as well.
And then, I forgot to have you add this, too, but just mentioning that we did take a walk through the Central Street parking area, so I think you guys know that behind Central Street, the town actually owns that, and, you know, the business owners have been talking a lot, and if you go back there, it's- And if you go back there, it's just random poles, the parking spots go all different ways, you know. Yeah, it's just, you know, how can we improve that? So, you know, if we have other money too, I'd love to, you know, be able to do something. Go ahead.
That was one of the projects that I had listed.
Yeah, I'm looking at my notes from, from the meeting.
And they, and they actually indicated to me that, that they think that might fit into one of the categories. So, we, I wanna try and see if we can make that work. But because there's a lot of small businesses in the area, they actually think that might actually fit into the category. So, we might be able to do something.
Another one that we just hadn't talked about that needs, if you walk back there, it's-
But, a far cry better than it was 20 years ago.
When it was dirt, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Way before, well, Mike probably remembers, but way before your time. I mean, it took 15 years to get it.
Yeah, and even, you know, do we wanna close an alley? Do we wanna, you know, get some little locations? Like, we literally looked like between buildings, like, where can we make this look nicer? What can we do and?
So, the takeaway from that was that we would actually work off a, a blank slate of paper, lay it all out the way we'd like to see it laid out, and then talk about that and see if everybody's comfortable with that approach. And then pick off the issues one by one to see how we can make it better. So, although, without a plan, you really don't have, it's really hard to figure out what's, what's the best moves to make on it. So, that's what we're gonna do next.
Did you have something, Mike?
I did, one other thing. Um, so I apologize that we didn't get our contracts here for executive session. It's not for lack of trying, there's been good faith bargaining on both sides of the table with, uh, management and, and all the different unions. Um, but they will be here, uh, two weeks from tonight. Um, I've notified each bargaining unit that that's the last time they can, they can come here to get something to the, to the, uh, annual town meeting in, in May. And, um, and, you know, as well, the advisory committee is expecting to start hearing those, uh, contracts the very next night, Wednesday, uh, April 13th. They need time to, to, to do that as well.
So, you won't be here?
I will not be here.
So, that would only leave me and Doc. So, we might need to meet the week before.
Okay.
She's gonna be gone, I didn't realize that.
Okay. I hope there are folks out here listening to this, you have one week.
Yeah. And, and I think that we will need at least an hour and a half, two hours. So, um, you know, if we're looking at three contracts, just given how long it took us, I think just, what was it? I've already lost police or fire, took us an hour and a half.
Forty-five minutes for, for fire, yeah.
Yeah, fire was the first one, yeah.
So, um, I think we'll have to look at scheduling. Just remind me again, when, when do you leave? When do you actually?
Um, I leave, uh, next Wednesday morning.
So, the 6th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Jealous. Okay.
I will contact all the union reps and presidents tomorrow. I'll start doing it tonight.
Unless she can, I don't, I don't, I really don't wanna get her into Zoom meetings and everybody else. I'm big about when you're on vacation, you're on vacation, so. Check out as much needed. Yeah, and Seth can't participate just for anyone watching due to conflicts of interest, which just leaves me and Doc who would dress like twins tonight.
Once again, yeah. They didn't get the memo.
All right, so, uh, we'll just have to, we'll have to circle back on that one. Um, anything else from, from either of you then? No? Okay.
You wanna schedule, uh, Leah, for that meeting since it'll just be for the contracts next week?
I just am not in front of my computer right now, my calendar. Um, that's my only concern with-
But, but, but yes. Right, we wanna do it next week.
Or, or what about, oh wait, no, that would put you, I can't promise you next Tuesday night.
How about the 4th? Tuesday actually doesn't work for me. The 4th would work better.
Which would be Monday? Mine could do Monday, for sure.
I can do Monday.
Yeah, Tuesday's really tough for me too.
I could do Monday.
So, Monday evening actually sounds like it works best for all of us then.
Do we have a place to meet?
Maybe 4 to 6?
Yep, wait a minute, checking for a place to meet.
We could go to a conference room, it's executive session.
Right, but you still need to vote on it in an open session.
Right, right. And I have to be out of here by 6.
On the 4th, we, the conservation just starts at 7.
Okay.
So, we all set?
So, maybe we could do like a 4 to 6 on the 4th?
Yep. Ah, no. I wanna talk about Monday, no, I work till 6.
Okay. Um, I could do 7 to 9. The conservation's in here. You said, right? And then school committee is actually near the next night, cause they run on the opposite weeks we do, I believe, on Tuesdays.
They do, and they start at 6:30.
Yeah.
Kick 'em out. No, I could do Tuesday early though.
Tuesday?
We could also just open on-
But Stephanie's not available Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just-
The night before she leaves is probably tough.
Yeah, that, that's just hard for me. I'm gonna have a million things going on the night before I fly out. Like, I'm out of the house at 4:00 AM.
Could we do Monday at lunch?
That would only give us like an hour.
Huh?
I, I can't step away-
Oh, that long, okay.
From work that long in the middle of the day, it's really tough.
All right.
And I imagine, oh, well Seth, it doesn't really matter for you.
Uh, later on Monday, you said after 7?
Yeah, but, so we could start, conservation usually goes, they don't usually go more than an hour and a half. Like, if we were 7 to 9.
We could also just be one of the conference rooms and just ha, and zoom open your meeting-
Right, right, right.
And so, we wouldn't have to be in here and, because they'll-
So, can we do like 7:10? I just have to be somewhere 6 to 7. Um, and I could be here, right, you know, I'm five minutes down the road.
Yeah.
But like 7:05 even.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so it sounds like we're good for Monday.
Monday. Five past, 10 past 7. So, what, does that give us, that gives us time to-
To post.
To post, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, that's the point, huh?
Yeah.
All right. And Mike, you'll let the unions know what we're looking at as far as timing?
Let them know we got Monday.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
And that we're coming in special for it too.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Well, not Seth, but most of us.
Yeah.
All right.
Stayed away special.
So, I'm just gonna go into selectmen's update if there's nothing else. Um, the Rabies Clinic, I'm sure everyone's seen that, that's this weekend. And then just a reminder that the Housing Choice, um, presentation is gonna be April 12th. So, if you haven't already, you know, just brushed up on that.
Yeah, I gotta look at that.
Um, it, it is out on the planning's website and that's for the public as well. And then I did just wanna recognize, um, the Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce noted, uh, recognizes the Business of the Year every year. And it was actually a, a Foxborough business that was Normandy Farms. So, just congratulate them for the Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce Business of the Year.
That's great.
Yeah. Anything else?
Yeah, one, one thing, I represented the board at Representative Akken Claus's town meeting over in Mansfield.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, it was just a cool, uh, place where he stood up, made a little presentation, and then probably a few dozen people asked him questions. And it was, uh, just kinda for me neat that, you know, our rep-
Yeah.
You know, as you have found and you have found-
He's very accessible.
Very accessible.
Very accessible.
You know, he really is, and he's doing a lot for-
Most of what I've seen of any Congress.
And his staff, his staff is great as well.
Staff, staff.
Dave, his, his chief of staff. And it was just a good, fun, uh, environment, you know. Uh, he was glad, a lot of, uh, I think almost all the Mansfield selectmen were there.
They hosted, right?
Yeah, they hosted, the new, uh, female selectman, not, um, uh, Megan, but the other one was there. Uh, she was, met her. Uh, but it was a, a good take, uh, and it was good for, uh, the representative and for him to be around. And maybe we can host the next one.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Definitely.
All right, great. And then, anyone, anyone else? Seth, Steph, anything before we move on to action items? No?
All set?
Yeah.
Motion to approve a $300 anonymous donation to the Council on Aging and Human Service Department.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, also a $78 donation from the Stop and Shop Bag Program, signed off by William Keegan, I'm guessing.
And there's just one more.
One more what?
Does I review?
10.2.
Does I review board?
Did we, so, oh, so the $78 was included in that first motion?
Oh, we don't need to make a motion on that one. That was just, that's just an FYI for us in board docs, sorry.
Oh. Cool.
Anything over, under a hundred, he can just do.
Oh, okay. Motion to approve Linda Shay to the Design Review Board for a term to end May 31st, 2023.
Second.
Under further discussion, I'm very excited to have a property owner in the district. It's, this is a very prescriptive board that's hard to find people. So, when Bruce Roberts stepped off, very grateful to Linda Shay for stepping on. So, she's a, she fills that property owner seat, um, in the district, so.
Why did Bruce Roberts step off? He was been on for a long time, right?
He went to Florida.
Oh, did he? Okay.
Or maybe part of the time at least.
Yeah.
Anyway, he wants to clear his calendar, that's, that's well deserved. All right, so we had a motion, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and last one.
Motion to HR?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.